It is Thursday, June 3rd, June 3rd, 2021, and I'm gonna call this Lacey City Council meeting to order. And we'll get started with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Which stands one nation.
So we have a published agenda and consent agenda. Can I get a motion for approval?
Move to approve the agenda as posted.
And Councilor Cox seconded. Is there any discussion? Then all in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion carries and we've adopted the agenda and consent agenda items. Next up is public comments on items not on the agenda. This allows the public to inform the Lacey Council their respective views on issues on items not on the council. We usually don't typically engage with the public during this public comment period. And I do think we have one person who's signed up is Wayne Olson. Hey Wayne, you know the drill. State your name and where you're from and keep the comments about three minutes.
Yes, thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Wayne Olson, a resident of Lacey. And I would like to share with you two significant reports released in the last few weeks that give me encouragement that the world community is now shifting to the right track to solve the climate crisis. The Thirsting Climate Mitigation Plan is a part of that solution. I sent an email to you this morning to provide a few graphics and references to supplement these comments. The first report is titled Net Zero to 2050: A Roadmap for the Global Energy Sector issued by the International Energy Agency, the IEA. This may sound routine to us, except for who issued the report. The IEA is an influential source of analyses, policy, and forecasts for the fossil fuel industry. The report details a narrow but doable route of over 400 actions to limit our global temperature increase to less than 2 degrees Celsius at the turn of the century. These actions amount to heresy to the fossil fuel industry, however, and include a transition to electric vehicles by 2035, transition to net zero electricity production by 2040, and no new investment in oil, gas, or coal starting now. The second report that encourages me is the monthly report from the Climate Action Tracker, the leading international organization that does ju- just that, tracks and analyzes actions of all the world's nations toward meeting their commitments to the Paris Climate Accord. According to the tracker, nations are now beginning to step up to the plate. With the extra push from the Biden Climate Summit meeting of April, additional national pledges, if kept, will result in a lower amount of warming by 2100, down from 2.6 Celsius down to 2.4 Celsius. An improvement, but still not good enough. The tracker also states that 131 nations, including the United States and China, have now announced targets of net zero emissions, most by 2050. These nations currently emit 73% of the global greenhouse gases. On the not-so-good side, the pledges of most nations still do not match their current national policies, an important point made by both of these reports. Under current policies, the world will warm an average of 2.9 degrees Celsius by 2100, which is far above the no-go danger point of 2.0. The US is in this category with our internal politics stalling substantive climate action policies at the federal level. If without federal action, actions at each state, county, and municipal level are even more important. That's why I strongly recommend that you adopt, implement, and fund the TCMP for the sake of your grandchildren as well as mine. Thank you.
Thank you. And according to my records, Wayne's the only person who signed up for public comments. We do have, we did have some written public comment and that'll become part of our official record as well. So next up on our agenda is, well, I guess I'll go to the mayor's report then. One thing I want to ask this council under the mayor's report is we have a upcoming Association of Washington Cities annual meeting, and I was wondering if, who from this council is planning on going to the AWC meeting? I know Deputy Mayor is gonna be there for sure. Councilmember Cox, are you planning on attending? No? Is there anyone else planning on attending the AWC meeting? Okay, well then, in that case, Ed, do you know if you're planning on attending the Association of Washington Cities meeting?
Time and location?
Deputy Mayor?
I will have to look it up again. It's
It's in this month.
It's the 22nd through the 25th, I think, maybe at least the 22nd through the 24th. The council board, council business meeting, I believe, is the 24th.
Okay, well, the reason why we ask is it's, this will be virtual again this year, right?
Yes. Yes.
So it's a virtual event. It's usually in a host city, but obviously it's still getting to be virtual this year. The reason why I ask is that the city of Lacey, the Association of Washington Cities every year goes through some bylaws and where, you know, there's, there's things that come up in each city, depending on the size of the city, gets votes. And so in the years past, we really directed whoever's gonna be at the meeting, you know, decide who's gonna be voting for the city of Lacey. There's, there's a possibility that you can have, have more than one council member, up to three, decide together on which way those three votes go. But in this circumstance, I, you know, I'm really comfortable with the Deputy Mayor makes decisions. She's also been on the board of the Association of Washington Cities, and so she knows what's going on very well. And so it's, it's, it's my opinion at this, at this point, we just let the Deputy Mayor have those three votes. Does that, that seem okay for everyone? Great.
I have to be there anyway because of the meetings, the AWC board meetings.
And so we'll, we'll let AWC know about that. First item is tomorrow is our, the third mayor's gala in, in support of the Lacey Veterans Services Hub. And this is a great event that's gonna really highlight our Lacey Veterans Services Hub and everyone knows the great work that's being, being done there. We're gonna see some of the update, you know, remodel that, that has, has gone into the Lacey Veterans Service Hub and really just celebrate that the Veterans Hub is here. It's been a great model and it truly has changed the lives of veterans and their families. And so this is a fundraiser that's been for that. I will, I will be co-hosting, so to speak, the fundraiser tomorrow with Jerry Farmer. And so I'm hoping everyone who's watching this right now can RSVP and sign up for the virtual event tomorrow. I mean, you can find how to do that on the CLAC website and also through our social media links. And so if you haven't RSVP'd for that, please do. And I look forward to talking more about the Veterans Hub tomorrow evening. And that's my report. I'll go on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council. I have a couple items. First off, I'd like to bring in Troy Wu. We received our GFOA Certificate of Achievement in Financial Reporting, and I want to have Troy have the opportunity to recognize this achievement.
Great, thank you, Scott. Good afternoon, council. It is my great honor to virtually present to you the 2019 award for the GFOA Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting. I'm gonna share a screen here and get a presentation starter for you all. This is the 19th year that Lacey has received this certificate. The, the years that we received it are 1999 through 2019. We do have one exception, and we did not receive the award in 2008, and that is because we didn't actually apply for it. That was a program that we didn't apply for because of budget reductions that occurred in 2008 after the financial crisis that was occurring at that time. To give you some background about the program itself, this is the, you know, the definition that the Government Finance Officers Association has on our website. I'm not gonna go through all of this, but you know, in, in general, this is, this is a program that encourages governments to go on, go beyond the minimum reporting requirements. This is in the spirit of transparency and full disclosure. And it's really to not make an assessment on the financial health of a government, but rather give the users of those financial statements information to make that evaluation for themselves. What's, for me, when I think about this program, I think it fits really well with our organizational values. The city council has over the years affirmed 11 different organizational values. I'll read through a few of them because it touches a lot of them, really. So integrity, stewardship, accountability, I mean, right in line with what the goal of this award is. And then indirectly, there's leadership, service, collaboration, professionalism. So we're touching seven of the 11 organization organizational values through applying and receiving this award. In terms of what it takes to achieve this award, I know I'm not going to do it justice for the effort and what goes behind receiving this. There are two different checklists that the evaluators of the award use, as well as the state auditor's office uses to evaluate our financial statements. And of course, your staff, your city staff uses this checklist to make sure that we qualify and will receive the award. And like I said, two different checklists. There's kind of a general purpose checklist that's about 49 pages long. And then there's a separate supplemental checklist that's 27 pages, and it covers just two areas. Pension and post-employment benefit systems, as well as cash and investment pools. So quite extensive. I do want to give you a sample of what that looks like. Obviously, this isn't on screen, so you could try to read and decipher. But this is one page of one of those checklists. There's hundreds of items on this checklist. I've given up trying to count these. I know you're probably wondering, the one thing account should be able to do is count. It's not possible to go through and count all the items on this list, but very extensive, very detailed, many different governing and, and guidance bodies that we have to follow those guidelines in order to qualify for this award. I do want to share some statistics of the 2019 program. Just looking at the Washington state entities, if you look at cities, 36 out of the 281 cities received the award in 2019, just under 13%. If you look at counties, nine out of 39 counties or 23% received the award. And then if you look at all entities that are eligible within the state, there were 73. So this would include, of course, the municipalities, school districts, universities, and special districts. And if we expand this to look at the entire country, there are about 19,500 incorporated cities and towns in the nation. Just under 2100 received the award in 2019 are about 10.7%. So we're in pretty rare company here. I do want to express thanks first to the city council and the city manager. This does cost the city a little bit of extra money each year to apply for this award, but I think it's well worth it and you know, helps with our transparency and accountability to the citizens of Lacey, but it's about $2,000. There's actual audit costs that are associated with this program as well as a submittal fee for the award. So I do thank you for that support. It is a matter of pride and recognition for, for our staff. I also want to say, thank everybody in this organization. One of the things that attracted me to be a part of finance and accounting and a support department for the rest of the city is we get to basically touch every operation within the city. You really can't do anything within the city unless you're talking about financing or funds or budgets. So you know, these are certainly areas that everybody touches in an organization. So thank you to the leadership and all staff at all levels. And of course, I have to recognize the finance staff who, you know, is really the, the driving force behind this, this project. And I do have some of my key staff here. Of course, I want to, you know, recognize all of accounting and utility billing and IT staff. But there's definitely four individuals that I think really deserve the thanks for the the effort that I can't describe that it takes to get this type of report done and the level of expertise. And then the dedication that these personnel have helped us with. So Christie Wolf, who is our financial services manager, Chelsea Yarwood, accounting manager, Jessica Sweet, our senior accountant, and Siobhan Johnson, who is our former accountant too. Her last day was actually yesterday. Certainly want to thank these folks and certainly wish Siobhan good luck in her, her new adventure and thank her for her effort on this. But really, if it wasn't for their dedication and expertise, we wouldn't be here today. And I certainly want to recognize the effort that this took in 2019. The bulk of this work happens during March, April, and May, and I think we all know what was happening, you know, starting in March and just to transition to trying to provide service to the citizens during a time when we were reacting to a pandemic. We were transitioning to working from home to keep the workplace safe. We were transitioning to become teachers. Our children are at home trying to distance learning. So we were doing all of these things at the, at the same time. So and I just saw a note that I forgot to mention Jessica Sweet. So certainly don't want to forget anyone. So again, I want to congratulate the staff for this, this award. And again, thank you, the council for the support. I'd be glad to answer any questions you might have.
Questions? Deputy Mayor?
I don't have any questions, but I am very proud of staff and, and yourself for getting this award again. And it was, it's always pretty significant, but after seeing the spreadsheet, I've realized now it's even more than what I had already thought. So thank you very much for doing such a good job.
Thank you.
Well, obviously, it really doesn't come as any surprise. I don't think, obviously, to this council or for anyone who's been paying attention, it's one of the things that we pride ourselves in, City of Lacey. And, and this award just really just, you know, proves that, you know, we, we have our, our financial act together like we had for a very long time. And so there's a lot that, as Troy points out, there's a lot that goes into it from the council down to the leadership to the staff, everyone sort of pitching in. And that's how you get awards like this. And, you know, it's another one of many awards that City of Lacey has been receiving lately. And I think that really tells, should tell the public that the, the City of Lacey is definitely headed in the right direction. And I, I think that really tells, should tell the public that the, the City of Lacey is definitely headed in the right direction. And, and we really appreciate all you do, Troy, and, and thank you for this. And tell your staff thank you from the city council as well.
You bet. Again, thank you for the support.
Great job.
Congratulations, Troy and your team.
All right, thank you.
Excellent. Next item?
So next item before council is a bid award for the Carpenter Road Overlay. This will be the last bid related to our service repavement program for 2021. And Scott Eggers can provide the background on that.
And I'm here. So good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and Council. I'm going to share my screen and can get on with the presentation. While I'm doing that, I just want to congratulate Troy Wu in the Finance Department. I mean, all these years I thought GFOA stood for something entirely different. Great, friendly, outstanding accountants. But anyway, congratulations. You all are phenomenal. So tonight, staff is recommending the award of the Carpenter Road Overlay Project. That's PW 2021-14 to Miles Resources, an amount of $1,680,680. There were five bidders on the project, 40 working days. Work will begin in August. As you know, earlier this year, we awarded the Carpenter Road Utility Project. So we'll get going on the overlay project shortly after utility work is done. So this shows a map of the project. It's 3.7 lane miles of paving. It starts on the north end near 26 Court Southeast and works its way down to just south of 45th Avenue Southeast. And, excuse me, it, it will tie into the northern limits of the county's Mullen Road and Carpenter Roundabout Project. Just as, as a note, this gray area here reflects the area that the right of way is in Thurston County. Belongs to Thurston County. They're going to contribute about $180,000 for the area shown in red, which starts around Stanfield and will go towards the north end of the fairgrounds. The blue area is also in Thurston County, but that's also within the limits to the roadway we had to tear up for our water and sewer project. So since we tore it up, it's really our obligation to reinstall. So in the, in the upper right-hand corner of this slide, I just wanted to show you the pavement condition index. It's running between 34 and 40. So that's the lowest category of pavement condition index, the poor category, which is failing. So this project is truly warranted. Thought I'd show you a side-by-side comparison of the three overlay and pavement preservation projects that you've authorized this summer. So obviously Carpenter Road, which we're asking you to award tonight, was about $1.7 million, 3.7 lane miles of overlay, 11,000 tons at $87.50 a ton. The 2021 overlay and 2021 slurry seal projects you awarded just a couple of weeks ago. The 2021 overlay project went to Lakeside Industries, around 1.5 million. It will overlay 2.7 lane miles of roadway, 10,000 tons asphalt at $83 a ton. And then the slurry seal was awarded to Intermountain for around $350,000. And it will preserve 17 and a half million dollars, or 17.5 lane miles of roadway. So this summer, you're awarding $3.5 million worth of overlay and pavement preservation work, which will say overlay and preserve almost 24 lane miles of roadway. So with that, I will unshare my screen, and if you have any questions, I'd be more than happy to answer them for you.
Your motion?
I move that we award Lacey contract number PW 2021-14 to Low Bitter Miles Resources LLC from Puyallup, Washington in the amount of $1,680,680.
None. All in fear without motion, signify by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then the motion carries.
Well, thank you, council, for approving the project. Thank you for actually, you know, supporting and informing the transportation benefit district. You know, and thanks to the citizens also for, you know, supporting the TBD so we can keep our roads in really great shape. So thank you.
Thanks. And last agenda item is the Community Development Block grant update.
And just real quickly, as you know, we had a work session on the Community Development Block Grant. I think council is very clear that they wanted some answers. As you know, Thurston County has requested us to consider signing up for another program where we partner with Thurston County as well as Tumwater on a three-year cycle basis, if you will. And our assistant city managers can provide some background detail in terms of the update on where we're at.
Well, thank you for that. Good evening, Mayor, Deputy Mayor and council members. I am going to share my screen and jump into the Community Development Block Grant updates. Let me know if you can see my screen.
Yep.
Fantastic. All right. Well, like the city manager just mentioned, we received a letter. And you can find the letter in Attachment A in your packet tonight on page 23. Thurston Council, Thurston County is proposing to renew the Thurston County Urban Community Development Block Grant Program for fiscal years 2022 through 2024. And like the city managers just mentioned, Thurston County would like us to provide them with written notice on whether or not we are participating in this program for those years. And specifically, they've asked us to provide written notice by June 11th. The city has asked them for an extension to respond until July. And this is to allow the city to fully evaluate, number one, the city's entitlement status and potential annual allocation if it were to become an entitlement community on its own, as well as to evaluate the impact on the total Thurston County Urban Community Program if the city were to become an entitlement program. And why we ask for this extension is because the city is currently waiting on the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, which is also known as HUD, for this information. And they have said that they are going to be providing it to the city in late June. Just to take a step back and to provide an overview on the Community Development Block Grant Program, the program itself was authorized by the Housing and Community Development Act of 1974. And the purpose of the program is to develop viable urban communities by providing decent housing, suitable living environments, expanding environmental opportunities, and really the focus is on low and moderate income persons. The program allows for a wide range of community development activities. And if you go to page 18 of your packet tonight, you'll see a pretty broad list of eligible activities. And again, the program is administered by HUD, which is why we're waiting for HUD's response. As far as eligible grantees, you are eligible to receive CDBG monies if you are a metropolitan statistical area principal city. You're also eligible to receive it if you are a metropolitan city with a population of at least 50,000. And if you are a qualified urban county with a population of over 200,000. And this excludes any entitlement communities that might be within the county. So here in Thurston County, this excludes Olympia because Olympia is currently a standalone entitlement community. There is a section in the HCD, which says that urban counties with populations of less than 200,000 can still be eligible for CDBG monies. However, they have to have the aggregate preponderance of persons of low and moderate income who reside in those areas of the county. This is another thing that we've asked HUD to provide some more information on as we evaluate potential impacts for the Thurston County program moving forward. Whether or not Thurston County without the City of Lacey would qualify for this particular section of the HCD. As far as funding program or formulas go, so just to start off, Congress allocates funds for this program. An appropriation establishes the administrative cap that can be applied. So currently, the administrative cap that can be applied is 20%. So cities or entities that receive funds can charge 20% of the funds they receive for administrative services. After the funds are allocated, first they get a section of them assigned to Section 7 Special Purpose Activities. And then the remaining CDBG funds are allocated, with 70% going to entitlement communities and 30% going to states, and this is for distribution for non-entitlement communities. And this is through a program called the Small City Grants. In the past, the city has applied for small city grants prior to being a part of the county's program. And these funds are awarded to entitlement communities as well as states by formulas. So I provided on this slide, and it's probably pretty small for you, but the formulas in which communities are provided funds for. And so it's important to note that the communities receive the funding based on whichever one of these weighted formulas they would receive the most funding for. So for entitlement communities, you can see there's Formula A and Formula B. Formula A takes into account population, poverty, and overcrowding. And then Formula B takes into account growth lag, poverty, and then pre-1940s housing. So this is something we've also asked HUD to clarify on if the city were to become an entitlement community, which formula would the city fall under? Again, just to draw your attention back to eligible activities, again, page 18 lists the eligible activities. But just to give a brief overview, it could include things like acquiring property, relocation, demolition, the rehabilitation of residential and non-residential structures, construction of public facilities and improvements, such as water, sewer facilities, streets, neighborhood centers, and the conversion of school buildings for eligible purposes, public services, activities related to energy conservation and renewable energy sources, and the provision of assistance to profit motivated businesses to carry out economic development and job creation and retention activities. Generally speaking, ineligible activities are just constructing general buildings for governments, political activities, you know, certain income payments and the construction of new housing with some exceptions. To participate, communities that are involved need to have a public participation plan. This is a very detailed plan that says, you know, outlines pretty clearly for the public how they can access information on the community development program, how they can provide input through public hearings, how a community would provide timely written answers, and also how communities would reach out to non-English speaking residents as part of their program. Now, just to go to some background on the city's history with community development block grant funding. As I mentioned earlier in the presentation, pre-2013, the city did compete for small city grants through Washington state. And the city was highly successful in receiving grants through that program. In 2013, the city entered into the Thurston County Urban Community Development Grant Program. And this was for the period of time from 2013 to 2015. At the time when the city entered into this urban county program, it didn't qualify to become an outright entitlement city because its population was less than 50,000. The three jurisdictions that are parts of this agreement, which are, again, the City of Lacey, Thurston County, and also the City of Tumwater, and the south counties are included as part of Thurston County, shared funds that were received through this grant on a rotating three-year basis. In 2015, the city entered into an amended ILA to continue this program from 2015 to 2018. And then, once again, the, the city entered into an additional term for 2019 through 2021. And like I mentioned earlier in the presentation, the city has received a letter from Thurston County, which is Attachment 1, asking to extend this program through 2022 through 2024. Just to give you kind of a high-level overview of where block grant funding has gone in the last five years through the urban county program. And the one thing I want to make pretty clear with this is, you know, appropriations change on a yearly basis. So the amount of funding that gets allocated to programs does fluctuate to some degree. And because this is 2015 to 2020, this does not reflect the latest round of funding that City of Tumwater is receiving this year as part of the program for 2021. So Lacey, the City of Lacey is the dark blue color. And as you can see, looking at this graph, the bulk of the city's community development block grant funding has gone to providing social services, housing, veteran services, and youth services. And just kind of broadly show how these were categorized. So they were categorized into those broad categories based on their primary functions. You can see here with the dark blue, it's showing Lacey's allocations for 2017. And you can see how it was sorted into social services, housing, youth. And there might be some overlap between some of those categories. So you can see here in 2007, there was a program that assisted youth, but also was housing. So that was considered under the housing category, but also funds were going to youth with that program allocation. So just as some more backgrounds, as you all are more than well aware, the American Rescue Plan Act is providing the city with $6.856 million, which is well below the initial estimates that the city was to receive. We have followed up with our federal delegation, and this allocation appears to be final. The reason that this is included as part of this presentation is I just want to highlight how the Community Development Block Grant formulas were used as part of this allocation process. So the U.S. Treasury Department adjusted Community Development Block Grant formulas to allocate funding for metropolitan areas. And I want to make the distinction here because I've said metropolitan cities before, which again are those cities over 50,000. The way the American Rescue Plan Act was written is it actually referred to metropolitan areas. So they had to replace metropolitan cities with metropolitan areas as part of their, as part of their determination for funds. And while they were doing that, in order to meet the intent, they adjusted the relative weights of the ratios that make up the formula to reflect the relative importance of the ratios absent the situation. So all of this is to say is we still want some more information on how this impacted the city's allocations, but that Community Development Block Grant Funding formulas played a significant role in how these funds were allocated to metropolitan areas, which the City of Lacey was considered a metropolitan area. So just some future considerations. So we met with HUD, and again, we received the letter from Thurston County requesting that we respond in June. However, with our conversation with HUD, we weren't going to be provided information on the city's status until late June. So we have asked Thurston County to extend our response to July 9th. And our recommendation is to wait until HUD provides these details. Again, you know, the city's entitlement status, our potential community development block grant allocation, as well as the impact on Thurston County Urban Community Program prior to determining the city's participation in any Community Development Block Grant Program. With that being said, I just want to overview very highly a couple of options that could be available for the city moving forward. So as I mentioned earlier, the city participated in the small cities allocations with the state. And then it went into the urban county with the Thurston County Urban County Program. And that was because we didn't qualify outright to be a entitlement community because we didn't meet that threshold of 50,000. It appears right now that we are going to likely meet that here in 2020. Our population is almost 53,000. So we are waiting on that confirmation from HUD to, to, to show that we are over that 50,000 threshold. So you can see on Table A here on the left-hand side, it is showing all of the Thurston County Urban County entitlement program members. So this doesn't take into account the City of Olympia, as it is its own entitlement community. And you can see with the City of Lacey, it is over that 200,000 threshold. Without the City of Lacey, it is likely to be below that 200,000 threshold. This is again, something that we've asked HUD to clarify as part of that letter that is forthcoming in, in late July.
I'm sorry to come in here, but I mean, we haven't received the official, official updated census. What, what we have received is an estimated census data that is somewhat official based on projections. So I, I've actually received those numbers last week, last Friday, and it, it showed the City of Lacey at 56,000 based on their census estimates. So until we get our, the, the actual So um in until we get our the the actual final final, um we really don't know what that number is going to be. So have we heard when the census data will be final and not just based on the estimates of that census data? Which is I'm not sure what's
That's a great question, Mayor Ryder. And it sounds like HUD will have some inside information on that for uh that letter that's we're going to receive in late June. My understanding is that all of the census data is going to be released in the August, September timeframe. But it sounds again like HUD will have that information earlier. Uh what you're seeing up here in table A are uh OFM estimates. So these are just estimates. They aren't actual uh census numbers.
And and because that changes things for us as well, which we're uh if we're the largest city in the county, it it changes um calculations as well. Uh so I know that going into going into the weeds a little bit, it um it would it would change how HUD calculates our CBDG funds. Um so there's a, there seems to be like a lot resting on those that official census data. Is that fair enough?
I the, I think that is a fair statement. And you know, again, hopefully the letter that we received from HUD in late June will be able to provide us with a um accurate uh population count, whether we meet the criteria to be an entitlement status. And then what um an allocation funding uh would look like if we were to be an entitlement city moving forward.
Because the other things that HUD needs to take into account is that we've had two annexations that came final here as what, June first, right? And so and so those numbers are definitely not included in in this table. So there's, there's a lot of moving parts here to make sure we actually got the right number in in place. So.
So if you look at uh table B, just to uh come back to the presentation here, um what it's showing is it's showing um if the city were to remain in the urban county program, um the funding cycle. So like I said, um every three years, each of the participating members receives funding. So you can see Lacey received funding in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and twenty. And then if we were to go um into a uh agreement for twenty twenty two to twenty twenty four, uh the city would receive funds in twenty twenty three. Um so as far as future considerations, like I said, um just kind of high level, there are some options moving forward for the city. So the first option would be no change, continue as a member of the Thurston County uh Community Development Block Grant Urban County Program. And again, the city would receive its allocation of fundings in twenty twenty three. Uh the second option for the city could be to become an entitlement community and leave the Thurston County uh Community Development Block Grant Program. If this were to be the case, the city would receive um an annual allocation of community development block grant funds uh that it could allocate uh to projects within the city every year. Um as part of this too, um you know, like I mentioned in the past, uh Thurston County has applied an administrative fee for the cost of administering the urban program. The city would be able to do a similar thing where it could apply anywhere um under twenty percent per the current appropriations bill uh for administrative fees. Um the city could also remain as part of a home consortium um as its own entitlement community, like the city of Olympia currently does. Uh the third option would be that the city could uh ren- renegotiate the terms of the urban county uh program for twenty twenty two and twenty twenty four. And some potential considerations uh that the city could uh look into is uh number one, having an annual allocation to all of the jurisdictions. As I've mentioned in the past, it's rotating on a three year basis. So this would be something where every city received something each year. Um there could be a new um formula for actually allocating the funds that the urban program receives. Uh currently, it's allocated where, you know, each jurisdiction receives the total amount for that year. Uh we could look into something like a per capita basis uh to increase equitability across the communities as well as um including UGA populations. Um we could look into applying a allocation on an annual basis specifically for housing needs. Um and also just seeing if there's a way to carve out, um you know, what Lacey's entitlement would be if it were to become its own entitlement community moving forward. Um and again, this would be something where the administrative fee could offset any sort of um fiscal impact on uh the urban program, which again is administered by Thurston County. So those are just high level overviews. Again, the recommendation is to wait until we receive that letter in uh late June from HUD, which will provide us the details um such as entitlement status and potential allocations and what the impacts could be uh would be on Thurston County Urban uh Community Program. That uh is the end of my slides, but I would be happy to uh answer any questions that the council may have.
Uh Councilor Cox.
Um Shannon, can you repeat what you said about um getting HUD to answer the question of whether the county would be able to continue if Lacey were to go its own way?
Yeah, absolutely.
Well, I was just gonna say, I don't want to break the county if if we were to do that, just.
Yeah, we've asked um HUD to provide more information on whether uh number one, the county has a population that is large enough to continue the program outright, so it would be over that two hundred thousand. And if it was below that two hundred thousand, if it would meet the criteria of having that preponderance within um the county itself.
Right. Okay. Well, again, I think this is going to take some careful thought. Um and I think most of you would agree, we are enjoying probably the best relationship we've had with the county in a lot of years. And I really don't want to jeopardize that relationship. So.
Yeah.
I just think a lot of thinking.
Yeah, Deputy Mayor.
Um our assumption though is that the county, Tombwater, and um is also growing at a certain population that compared to what the original was. So it could have made up, sorry, I'm hoarse right now, could make up the difference, right? Correct?
And that's, yeah, absolutely something Deputy Mayor that we've asked for clarification. Do they meet that two hundred thousand threshold so that they could continue to be an urban program without the city of Lacey?
Okay.
Uh Councilor Greenstein.
Yeah, I mean, I I think it's, I think the recommendation to wait until we have final numbers is the only thing that makes any sense, obviously. Without having the details of the numbers and how it would affect the county if we were to go our own way, really can't make any, you know, informed decision. So but in the end, I still think the answer has to be whatever is best for the people of Lacey as our first priority. Uh the region secondly, but the people of Lacey first, because that's who we represent.
Yeah, I it's gonna be really difficult. There's so many different moving parts here. Right in until we have the actual population data that is concrete, including, right, the the annexations that hopefully will be cut uh to HUD as as well, because there's always a process and all those things. We have to complete our um our census of those areas here, hopefully this month. And I know we have money in the budget. I'll talk about that when I go to the finance and economic uh development committee report. Um but that's part of the process after the annexations, the actual numbers. Although it should be pretty close because the census just happened. Um we should have a pretty good idea. Uh but there there's no, there's no doubt that um, you know, during the American Recovery Act plan dollars, that the county did receive our portion based on the population um of of that money, right? And I I don't, I didn't hear the county saying, let's give the city of Lacey the the five thou- the five million dollars that they lost because we received it as an urban county. That being said, I I I do think, uh I don't want to necessarily end this program for the county in Tombwater either. But um one thing's for sure, we're we're the largest city in Thurston County, um which then brings additional dollars to this program. Um and I'm pretty sure that the census numbers will show that. I mean, I I received the the numbers from Congresswoman Strickland that shows at the fifty six thousand mark. And so I I'm trusting her sources are 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 better than than most on when it comes to the, you know, the population forecast. So um there there's a lot to think about, but I I'm, I I do think uh we we need to be very careful on how how we go forward and that we're not trapped into a a system that is really putting Lacey citizens um in in a worse position. You know, I I can't agree with you, Councilor Greenstein, on on that. Um you know, we we signed up to the, to this originally because we were under the fifty thousand mark. It was especially at the time, we could continue to the small cities grants that we were very successful at, you know. And we said, well, let's let's do it regionally. And I I think it's worked out for for a while. Um but you know, I I I do think at the end of the day, we need to, you know, do what's best for the city of Lacey. And 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 hopefully assure that that the county can go forward as well. So. Deputy Mayor.
But right now, what does uh what do you need? Do you need us to just say uh a thumbs up? Or do you need a vote or and what do you need?
This was just a briefing uh before the council and we will be receiving information from HUD in late uh June, as I mentioned. And then um responding to Thurston County by July ninth.
Yeah, I mean, my my worry here is that you're not going to receive all the information. They said you're going to receive by the end of this month. I I kind of think that's optimistic because I don't know if we'll have our census data back to them on two two annexations by then. I mean, uh unless Scott, you know something I I don't, we haven't, have we started that census work?
Well, I think I think you put the census stuff away because that's on its own separate track. The census is not going to include the two annexations. Well, really, only one is beneficial and that's the Marvin Road Silcom Annexation. The one at uh Cap City is still pending before the BRB. So put that aside, I think we definitely meet the definition of an entitlement community because we're over fifty thousand. I think we just need to know what would that allocation be so we can make an analysis of, does it make sense to stand alone versus being a consortium? But to Councilor Cox's point, I think we want to be mindful of the partnership we've had for the last six years.
I'm not talking about census, I'm talking about the annexation census.
Right, that that has not begun yet.
Okay, well, eh there's any other questions? I guess we're just gonna have to sit and and wait and and hopefully HUD gets back to us in time. I I'm not sure what we do if we, you know, come or July ninth, if we haven't received that information or we haven't had a council meeting or a work session to really go over the the options before July ninth. When did, when does a county, what's the last possible date the county needs to?
An excellent question, Mayor Ryder. And um they can request uh that HUD extend their date to respond. And so that's certainly something um that they can do that would take them into August before they have to provide an answer. So there is some additional time that could be built into that process should we not receive something from HUD uh in late June.
I think my recommendation to them is that they would do that because there's a lot to this this discuss here before we actually sign another contract with with the camp, with that consortium. And so I I just don't know if we're going to be able to have that conversation and have the information in time, eh by early July. I just, I don't, I don't know how we're going to be able to do that in time. So. I'm not sure if you, if we need a formal asking them to delay that till later or not. But it it would seem to make the most amount of sense to me that they delay that a little bit longer. What what's your, what's your thoughts, Scott?
I think we definitely can make that request. It doesn't hurt us. I mean, the more time, the better. And if we have the answers quicker, then we just go and proceed based on what we know. So I think we can make that request now.
Doesn't that seem like the right thing to do? Let's at least have a request to do a delay. And so we have more time to discuss this. I think that's understood. Yeah, okay, then we'll we'll go ahead and make that. Okay, great. Thank you. Any other questions? Appreciate it.
Well, have a good evening.
You too, you too.
Thank you, Shannon. Good job.
Scott, you have anything else?
That is it?
Yeah. Well, then I'll go into standing in general community reports. And the I'm up first, the Finance and Economic Development Committee uh met last uh on May twenty fifth. Um we had a two budget, I or two items that we discussed. The first was our our twenty twenty one uh budget amendments. This is, it goes to a good reminder, you know, that the budget uh is a working, living document. And as soon as you pass it, it seems like the next day immediately changes based on unknown things that come up. Um and it's also really hard, it's a good reminder, it's really hard to compare year to year budgets, you know. And as a business owner, that's, it's, th- this one's always difficult for me, right? Because I always take what I did in the first quarter of, say, twenty twenty and compare it to the first quarter of twenty twenty one. So I know where I am at business wise. Um you know, and it's a, it's a, doesn't necessarily be the whole picture of what's going on, but to a a good idea of where you're at um for your business. City budgets don't work that way. Um and specifically because there's a lot of transfer ins and transfer outs. That isn't our local tax dollars, right? Uh but we have to account it that way. And it affects our budget. And so you see this big swings because uh let's say it trends, we get a a um a grant from the states, right, or a big grant from the federal government. We have to put that into our budget. And then so it it increases that and then we spend it, it decreases it. And and so as really not, doesn't really show what is actually going on, you know, from a this a tax standpoint on that the citizens, the businesses of Lacey, but it shows up in the budget that way. So with that, with that background, for for example, um the the veteran services have um first floor tenant improvement project is is something that um we've knew about for a long time. We've we've gotten a uh a grant for it. Um and we've seen several of their funds. And uh here we are having to do a budget amendment um because here in twenty twenty one to to um pay for that expense. Um and so that shows up un- under our um budget amendments. Um there's uh the strategy, the strategic communications plan project. Um that's something we did have budgeted. And of course, it's uh we need, we need some little work, about another forty thousand dollars to complete that. That's been ongoing, um very important. And it's to undertake. Um and uh we desperately need a a person, uh a new staff person in our community economic department. And so uh there's a budget amended for for that as well. And uh as I mentioned, we have two uh different annexations, rather rather large annexations that have come through this or the process of going through this, this coming away is well, the capital city states is, it's about to be final only. But um for one of those um senses that happens, so after you do the annexation, you, the city is so basically door to door and and get an accurate count of who's living there. Uh and so we budgeted one of those, one of those are in the budget, the other one's not. So they're both around twenty thousand. Um so we need to do a budget amendment of uh actually twenty one thousand um dollars, over twenty one thousand dollars. Um you know, it, there there's a lot, there's a lot here. I might go through every every one of them. But uh another one that we we had talked about is the, there's a, there's a five hundred thousand dollars for our new police station enhancement upgrades and instant capital equipment fund. Um and so in in this case, we're, we're counting for that a little bit different, which takes up a budget amendment. Um and so uh we're gonna be changing it from the um the original budget to change from equipment from building improvements to actually to a more a- appropriate um category. Um so there there's that that happened. Um and let's see, that's sort of a a lot of the larger, different budget items. There's, there's a, there's a list in our packet that um the council um can go through as well. Um and then we had a an update on our twenty twenty one uh first quarter financial report. And again, um it, when you, when you look at where we're at year to date compared to what we budgeted year to date compared to what we were at year to date last year, it, this is again a a difficulty compared to the private sector to the, how the public sector um looks, looks at their books. To the, how the public sector um looks looks at their books. Um, and a lot has to do with some bigger, you know, big expenditures that come in and the timing of the expenditures. Um, along with the revenues, like so, for example, um uh for our property tax. Well, property tax um isn't really due to the end of, in end of April. And so it doesn't, it's not showing up in our our budget because this was through the uh in the March, our first quarter. And so that shows that it's off. Um, the, you know, the one good thing that I I think we're all pretty aware. Well, uh aware of is our our sales tax collections continues to be really a a bright spot in in our budget. And a year ago, we just uh, we still weren't sure if, you know, a year ago today, we still weren't quite sure. How things were playing, gonna play out. Um, I I mean, it it seemed better than, you know. Than what we thought it would be even a year ago today. Um, but our our sales tax collections have been, seem to be very, very strong in the city of Lacy overall. And um that shows again, the the one thing that we had talked about was there's um, there's the difference between this. Sales tax and and B and O tax, and we've always considered both those numbers should be about the same. As they rise in the fall. Um, but we saw a a big difference last year. Well, our our city's post-tax collections continue to be really strong, our our B and O sales tax collections. Uh, weren't nearly as strong and we, you know, we kind of pondered what's going on with that. And and we had a conversation at at this committee meeting and talked to with with Troy about it. And he proposed uh a a theory, which I think is was, which is spot on. Um, the the services side of a B and O tax collection. Was really hurt really bad um compared to other sales tax revenue generating um in during COVID. And so if you think of uh what's provide, you know, the industry service industry. Um, those were, those those industries were were hurt pretty, pretty bad. And so they were, uh those, so those collections end up being down considerably more compared to sales tax. And and, you know, as we're looking at the numbers now, it sort of makes sense in hindsight. At the time, we, it didn't, it didn't make sense, but uh now that we've looked at some numbers again. Um, and 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 in fact, our B and O tax um revenues um are 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 doing, you know. Doing okay, but uh I think that's a good sign of of where we're at at in our economy uh as well. Um, the other thing is this, uh the utility tax collections um have been pretty high. And I think that's a a direct result of of COVID and people staying home, right? People are in their houses more, they're using their utilities uh a lot more. Um, and so uh that has shown up in um this report as well. Um, so uh, but in in the, unfortunately, the one thing that has really been, was been difficult. Is our our interest earnings, of course, because as interest rates have dropped um and been about zero. It that's has really affected our interest uh earning opportunity. Um, and so it's, it's been down quite, quite a bit um con- considering. Um, and really, other than that, I think that is mostly my report. And next, I will turn it over to General Government, Deputy Mayor.
I muted myself because I dropped my mouse, but okay. So uh, May twenty fifth, we met also, and there were two items. Um, if you remember, we um did a, uh, we have a um municipal code. That waived fees for nonprofits, um such as um. Uh, the eligible fees would be for uh mechanical plumbing, electrical. Um, plan check and water meter fees and so forth. And so um the affordable housing strategy brought up. Um, that we should expand the program to waive fees for non uh uh for the private sector builders. Building low income housing um as a priority action. And um, so if the council considered this amendment. Criteria and conditions will need to be established to determine which uh units meet the community needs. For low income housing and meet state uh law regarding use of public funds. So we had a discussion and then um apparently the um, at the request of the Finance and Economic Development Committee. Uh, at their June twenty third, twenty twenty meeting, staff asked um uh Government Affairs to. Committee of the uh, oh, I'm sorry, Olympia Master Builders to discuss the program. And the O M B was supportive of the options and uh but didn't have a whole detailed feedback. So the committee discussed using the same playing field for private industry as they do for nonprofits. And defining the square footage for starter home and adding incentives for building homes with a smaller footprint. Um, so we're having the committee of staff come back with some scenarios for discussion. And then the second one, um which is really gr- good based on um. How we're trying to deal with homelessness so much, Salvation, the Salvation Army. Uh, Captain Jared Arnold came back and talked about how they have a community housing program. And they did an assessment and discovered that really the expanding the needs for homeless veterans. Um, really is focused and and needs to be focused on Lacy at the moment. And so the agency applied for a homeless providers grant per diem program to expand the program. And bed count to provide support services. And they won't know if the funds will be awarded, but they're really looking forward at potentially buying a hotel. Here in Lacy and setting up um close to the hub and so that they can um provide. Um, reserve to uh, you know, provide for uh homeless vets. And then they are currently working with the Lacy Hotel to reserve ten rooms to house ten single homeless veterans. And so it sounds pretty promising and I, I, you know, it's a start of trying to identify. How to house um homeless and work very closely with the hub. And that's my report.
Thank you. You know, we've been uh talking for a long time about, you know, the the building permit, waiving the builder permit fees and what that looks like. And yeah, it was really kind of interesting. We were having a conversation. Um, you know, we we're, when you look at the numbers, um it's, it's not as big of numbers as I sort of thought in the back of my mind. It would be if we, you know, if we waived the fees. You, how, how, how much of an incentive that would be to to build more um low income housing? And it, it doesn't end up looking as 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 a, as big as, you know, I think we might have had it in our our mind. I mean, it would, it would be a contributing factor for for sure. But uh, you know, some of the other major fees that are involved there is of course the hookup fees for the water and sewer. You know, those, those are are can be quite big a- as well. Um, and you know, we haven't discussed doing, doing that. Um, but I I do think it's a a good, good conversation to have with O M B on, again, on what's a starter house? What's the size of a starter house and what kind of incentives that we can come up with um for starter homes? It's something that I think this whole, the council has talked about time and time again. We need more starter homes in in Lacy.
Well, here's one of the other issues that um I would uh was representing uh T R P C. At the Growth Management Policy Board at Puget Sound Regional Planning. And O M B there and somebody else brought up the fact that lumber, for for instance. A building materials has skyrocketed, so there is that problem of trying to build. A affordable house and still have to deal with the actual materials that is um increasing and stuff. So it's, it's kind of a balancing act, but I think any kind of waiving of fees may be beneficial in those. In that respect.
Yeah, I do, I do look forward to have a conversation because this, this council's been, you know, pretty unanimous on the support for for more incentives. To build lower income housing and uh I think it's gonna be the all, all options uh available to actually, you know, see that. See that happen. So I'm, I I look forward to that conversation. We, we've been having it for such a long time here. I was really hoping those numbers were gonna be better, right? It's like, if we waived all, all the 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 basic fees, would would that be incentive enough? And it it didn't turn out to be as big of numbers as I thought there was gonna be.
Well, the other thing.
The connection fees, it becomes very significant.
Yeah, right? And and we, we haven't talked about that and.
No, but that needs to be part of the conversation.
Yeah, especially if it's a smaller unit in the, in the, in the infrastructure is already there. I think that's where we can maybe get, right? Anyway, I'm sorry, I, it's a something I'm pretty passionate about.
The weird thing is, nobody ever tries, uh developers try to utilize that um percentage. For that twelve, is it twelve year um uh waiver until they build something?
That's only, that's multifamily and then in one small area.
Yeah, but they don't use that either.
Yeah, well, I think there's some other opportunities for maybe that to be coming in place for sure. Okay, sorry, I go off on that tangent. Um, next up is the Land Use Committee.
Righty. We also met on May twenty fifth and uh heard updates to the comprehensive plan. Uh, one piece of that was on the climate mitigation plan that's currently under consideration. Um, Jessica Brand gave, outlined a number of steps that the city itself has taken toward community outreach on the plan. The community was invited to a month-long um virtual open house for the month of April. Where they could, you know, learn about the topics covered in the climate mitigation plan and provide their thoughts. Um, local actions and what they should be. The top action items included converting to electric vehicle fleets, green building, technical assistant. And LED lighting. Those were the top ideas they floated. Um, additionally, there was an online survey from April first to May fifteenth. Where um, and this was self-generated, but we got a hundred and sixty responses. And the top priorities there included renewable energy and a shift from fossil fuels. On May eighteenth, uh our City Planning Commission held a hearing on the plan. And received overwhelmingly positive and supportive comments on it. So throughout this project, we used a variety of methods to communicate with the public. And hear their response back, so there was social media. Uh, it was coordinated with the Lacy Caris Campaign. Um, elected and appointed officials shared links to it with their networks. Uh, community presentations were made to Olympia Master Builders, Panorama and Thurston Climate Action Team. Um, it was in the spring twenty 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 one, Stream Team Newsletter. Uh, April twenty twenty one, Lacy Life. Um, and and on and on, there were quite, quite a few efforts on that. So overall, like seventy percent of the community was very supportive of this. Uh, so next, next steps, because this will be eventually coming our way. Um, council receives, will receive a briefing at our study session next week on that. And then consider adopting the comprehensive plan update on July fifteenth. So those are the big dates there. Uh, we also heard uh about the Housing Action Plan. And if you'll recall, in November twenty nineteen, uh Lacy in partnership with Olympia and Tom Water. Received a grant award from Department of Commerce to develop a housing action plan. To meet the goals of House Bill nineteen twenty three. Uh, which was to encourage building more affordable and market rate housing. In order to have a increased variety of housing types in our market. Uh, so, so to support that, the 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 three cities contracted with the Thurston. Regional Planning Council to develop a housing needs assessment, a rental survey to better understand how much residents. Are currently paying for rent and how rents are changing in our area. And a preliminary, a preliminary draft housing action plan that can be tailored for use by each city. That contains specific actions that we can take to increase the stock of affordable housing. So the draft, well, there's a number of draft implementation actions. There was a. Planning Commission public hearing on this plan, also on May eighteenth. We are going to get a briefing on it at our Ju- June tenth council meeting. And additionally, we had uh an update on the um section dealing with the Urban Forest Management Plan. And I I won't go into the details there because my understanding is that the Planning Commission. Wants to do a little bit more work on it before it comes to us. Uh, we, we will get a briefing on June tenth, but that project is a little further behind. So there you have it. And all, all of this is accessible in the um minutes.
Thank you so much. Uh, now we're on to Boards, Commission and Community Reports. I'm up first, but I do not have a report. Deputy Mayor?
Well, actually, I don't either. Our um Jazzcom meeting was canceled. But we do have a, our retreat coming up June nineteenth and then um Lot and um. Orca doesn't meet until June ninth, so that's my report.
Councilor Cox?
Uh, InterCity Transit Authority met last night and it was one of the shortest meetings we've ever had. But we did accomplish a few things, including adopting the twenty twenty two to to twenty twenty five. Transportation Improvement Program for projects with, that will be um paid for with federal funding. Um, we also authorized the General Manager to um execute what's known as the Task Order. Uh, this is for engineering for the Martin Way Park and Ride improvements. So that project is starting to move along and I think everybody will be happy when that lot is a little more accessible. And easy to use. Um, in terms of updates, the um. The new building at the Olympia Transit Center opened on June first. And uh Greyhound also is serving the site. And they, they are expected to start utilizing, fully utilizing it. With um sales um of tickets there onsite beginning in mid-September. Um, more good news as, you know, we start to start the COVID recovery is that. They anticipate that by July nineteenth, they're gonna be able to uh reintroduce the Olympia Express. Service up to Lakewood, which has been missed by a number of people who commute to work up that way. And uh just a reminder that um InterCity Transit is under a federal mask mandate. Uh, for buses and so any, all riders have to have a mask. At least through September thirteenth, when that order ends. So that's it for Transit Authority and then the Regional Housing Council also met on May twenty sixth. And agreed to recommend to Thurston County Commissioners a list of projects, programs and activities. To share a nearly eight million dollars in local, state and federal housing funds. Um, some of that money originates from Lacy. Um, the grant amounts range from fifteen thousand dollars all the way up to two point three million dollars. And they cover. And they cover human basic needs, housing basic needs, housing services, capital projects, and what's known as a pipeline project award. And, um, this time, the pipeline projects were not available, and so they were able to, um, move up a, um, Habitat for Humanity project, uh, in Lacey on Holman, Holman Street. So good news for Lacey there. Um, the Housing Council's planning team is working on a plan to create one hundred and fifty to two hundred units of permanent supportive housing by twenty twenty-four. Um, so the, the work of the planning group is to narrowly focus on how the region could take advantage of new resources in order to exceed the goal of the homeless, this is a five-year county homeless crisis response plan. And that goal is three hundred units of permanent supportive housing by twenty twenty-four. Um, it does not diminish the need to develop a range of affordable housing options, including for those in the fifty, for people earning fifty to eighty percent of the, um, EMI or those in the higher income range, because housing prices continue to just skyrocket. As Councilmember Miller, I'm sure can attest. And then, uh, the goal of the planning group is to have a plan ready for the Housing Council review by late September of this year, and that's my report.
Thank you, uh, Councilor Greenstein.
Just one quick report tonight, uh, Thurston nine-one-one Communications met on the second, uh, yesterday. And really, the, the meeting was primarily just updates on the several projects that are ongoing. The one thing I did want to mention, though, is there's gonna be an open house on the radio system for all interested parties and stakeholders. Um, that's gonna be on June twenty-third from three to four-thirty. It will be virtual, so if there's anyone interested from council or staff, um, in that, you know, uh, reach out and we can get you an invitation to that, the, the link and everything. So I don't know, Scott, if you've received that, I don't know if city managers got that or not, but, uh, if you do, if anyone wants to attend from staff, we can get you the, the link for that. Um, other than that, uh, the only other thing of interest was that, you may know this, but Tom Water and Olympia Fire are having discussions about merging those two operations. Um, and looks like that's likely to go forward, I would say. Uh, that, and that is my report.
Oh, that's, I know they've been talking about that for a while, but would it be a regional fire, fire authority? Is that what it happened?
I think that's how it would be set up, I don't know the details, um, but, uh, one of the coun- the council member who represents Tom Water on that committee, Lea Dohoff, I did mention that it's likely to move forward. At least, uh, Tom Water, I think, is, I think their council voted on it this week at their meeting.
Wow, that's, that's pretty big news, for sure. Um, let's see, Councilmember Miller.
Uh, let's see, uh, TRPC meets tomorrow morning at eight-thirty, so I don't have a report there. My last report on Thurston Thrives was two weeks ago, nothing new there, uh, because I reported on it two weeks ago, uh, shortly after that meeting, and hopefully we'll have an LTAC, uh, meeting very soon, uh, to take a look at our budgets and see, um, you know, if we're meeting projections. And, uh, we did, uh, fund quite a few things, um, late last year. And so, uh, to look at the numbers this time is gonna be, uh, pretty exciting. The, uh, T C C A T, I don't have a report for them. Uh, and that is all I have for these four committees.
But Councilmember Kunkel.
I have no report.
Then just like that, we're at the end of our agenda. So I hope to see most of you tomorrow at, uh, the, uh, Mayor's Gala. And, uh, and if, for the public who's watching now, please RSVP and get your, get your tickets. We're a great cause and you can learn all about our Lacey Veteran Services Hub. It's, uh, it's, uh, quite the success story for, for our veterans and their families and, and for the. But until next time, you keep it classy, Lacey, and I'll call this meeting adjourned. See ya.